Good morning, everyone. We are at Tara Drummond Trailhead here at the Silver Comet Trail, located at Seaboard Avenue and 278. Beautiful park to get on and, man, who? What are you doing?
Hey, John Grant.
Jeremiah Phil. What are you doing out here?
Preparing for the Rides for Wishes.
You already getting prepared? You gonna be riding?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'll be riding. Have you heard about the changes coming?
Hey, there's a lot of changes, all positive. We need to share it with everybody.
Yes, sir.
Folks, in case you haven't heard, there's some changes to this year's Rides for Wishes. It will be on August the 16th, starting at 8:00 at 240 Constitution Boulevard. That is Veterans Park. That's where it will start. Once the ride starts, it's going to come across 278 here to the Tara Drummond Trailhead and head west. If you're not familiar with what Rides for Wishes is, this is a collaboration that we do with Make-A-Wish Georgia. And we take sponsorships, and what the money does, it stays all in Paulding County to sponsor a family that they have a child that is going through a critical or terminal illness. And we just want to give them that opportunity to be able to escape for a day and to maybe just have a little bit of relief and enjoy themselves. So all that money stays right here to sponsor a family in Paulding County. But it's not only changing up to be August the 16th. We're gonna have some live entertainment here that morning. We're going to also have a coffee truck. We're gonna have us a food truck to offer some live refreshments for everybody. Maybe you want to get your carbs up before you take out on the trail. And then as you leave, typically, that's been the end of the race. We all go home and we wish the riders well, but we want them to come back to Veterans Park to end the ride where we're going to have some great giveaways. You may even get some of them.
I hope so.
Because you're a fast rider.
Yeah. I don't know about that, but I'll be there.
Hey, don't let him kid you. He's awesome, man. So he's going to be here. We want to encourage you and everyone else to come out. Hey, if you don't ride, that's okay. Just come on out and support a Paulding County family. And the money goes to a great, great cause. And we are excited about the changes. August the 16th, starting at 240 Constitution Boulevard, Veterans Park, getting on the Trailhead at Tara Drummond, and then coming back to finish it up. Hey, live entertainment. Where can you get all of this in one morning? Are you excited?
I'm excited. Yes, sir.
Man, it's good to see you.
I gotta get back after.
Well, good luck, man.
Thank you.
Come see you.
We're here today to celebrate Employee of the Month, Eric Wolf. Well, Eric just embodies what Paulding County stands for. Just collaboration, teamwork. He's innovative. He's forward-thinking. And he's just a team player. I went to Mr. Wolf about doing some training in the reservoir. His immediate response was, "Do you have the boat with you? We can put it in the water right now and do some training." I knew right then that he was a team player. He was ready to help us out in anything we needed. I just want to say thank you for being who you are, man. Thank you for all the teamwork, all the collaboration, everything you've given to us, allowed us to do over there. He's an awesome guy. Just a good dude.
Hello, everyone. I'm John Grant. I want to take a moment today to tell you about the newest department, the Communications Department here at Paulding County. Not only are we the newest, we're the smallest. As a matter of fact, the entire department is in this room right now. The Paulding County Communications Department serves as a central in connecting citizens, businesses, elected officials, and all county departments. Our work crosses all departmental boundaries to promote transparency, engagement, community throughout the community. Our responsibilities include promoting all public events, managing county social media marketing, live streaming Board of Commissioners meetings, drone operations and content, creating all video content in-house, and serving as a liaison across departments and with the public. This is just a snapshot of our work, but it demonstrates the depth, reach, and impact of what we do every day in service to Paulding County.
Hey, everyone. I'm Philip, Media Production Coordinator for Paulding County. Hope you all have been loving the content we've been producing so far, but we still have so much more to do to serve you and keep you informed.
Hi, my name is Matt Walker, and I'm the new video producer here. Uh, hold on, just one second. There we go. Perfect. I'm the new guy here, and I am super excited to be a member of this team. I really believe that Paulding County is full of amazing people and stories, and I am so excited to be a part of a department whose job it is to bring those stories to you.
So now you know the Communications Department of Paulding County. We are excited about serving you. And when I say you, we mean everyone. Not just the natives of Paulding County like all of us, but also those of you that have moved in here, because we understand you are here for the same reason we never left here. We all love Paulding County, and we are excited to serve you.
With you, please put it on silent, cut it off. We would appreciate that. And I need to make sure last time I said that, I didn't cut mine off, so. I'll ask Marshal Mayhand to come bring the sign-up sheet for me. I appreciate it. Thank you, buddy. And I want to say welcome to y'all. It looks like everybody's Baptist here. Everybody's sitting on the back row for some reason. You know, there are seats up here that you could, you can sit in, but maybe you just wanna, you don't want to get, uh, I won't say that. But there's also people who are looking online or coming to our BOC. We're trying to promote more people to come, and we know people are working. They can't come here and participate, but we're getting more interest. So we are tracking that. And I got last ones, which was June the 10th, and we had 9.9,000 viewers watching the BOC. So more people are interested in what's going on in our county. And we do want to encourage you to talk to your family, your friends, to participate, whether it's here or online, so that they'll know what's going on. And we won't, we won't have to explain as much as we normally do if you will participate. So thank you for doing that. I'm gonna have everybody stand. We're gonna do the pledge and the prayer, and I'm gonna ask Art Brady to come up and do the prayer and the pledge for us as you go. But I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Art. I love to find out about people. Now, I think I've met you several times, even when I spoke at some of the locations where you have been, at some of the churches. But he is actually our Utility Inspector here. I think you've been here, what, about five years or so? And he's at Cornerstone Baptist in Marietta. He's been pastoring there for three years, but that ain't the only place you've been pastoring. You've been pastoring for over 30 years somewhere, spreading the gospel and everything. He's married. He's got two kids. One works in our water department. And the other one, I think, is your daughter might be in Tennessee, and you spend a lot of time in Tennessee with the grandkids. That would be, I understand that. You like to spend time up there with your granddaughter and the baby, and you spend a lot of time at your church. And I have found out that Lauren, our receptionist, is your favorite niece. Is that true?
She's one of them.
She's one of them. She told me she was your favorite. So open us up in prayer, buddy. Thank you.
Let's pray. And before we pray, I want to give this verse of scripture, and that's what I live by. Colossians 3:23, "And whatsoever you do, do it hardly as unto the Lord, and not to man." Dear Lord, I come to you humbly today. I thank you, Lord, for the opportunity. I don't belittle this opportunity just to stand and to talk to you one more time. God, I thank you for a place that I can call my place of employment, Lord, that I have the freedom to stand and to call on my Savior, Jesus Christ. Lord, today, God, we, we come to you and we pray for our country. Lord, we, we know there's a great turmoil right now in our country and with the things going on in this world. And I pray, God, that you would touch. I pray for our military, Lord, as they protect us. I pray for our president to make the right decisions in his everyday, what he does for our country. Lord, I come to you and I ask you to touch this county, Lord. And what a privilege to work here and work around the, the people of this county and to see how it's growing. And Lord, I pray, God, that you continue to bless here in this county. Lord, we pray for our law enforcement, Lord, the things they face, day in, day out. Lord, we pray that your hand protects and be around them. And Lord, as we seen this morning, many of our fire department personnel has come in, Lord, and they put their life on the line. Lord, I pray for their protection as they protect the citizens of this county. God, I pray, Lord, for each one of these on the Board of Commissioners, Lord, as they sit and make the decisions that need to be made each day, Lord, about the growth of this county and, Lord, the administration of this county. Lord, I pray that you would guide them. And Lord, as we quoted that scripture, Lord, whatever they do, do it hardly as unto you, Lord, because that's who we need to please more than anyone, Lord, is to follow what you would have us to do. Lord, I pray that you'd help us all to be leaders. Lord, we know to be a great leader, you gotta be a great follower. And Lord, we'd follow you and what your word says, Lord, and we won't have to worry about pleasing man. We'll just do what is right. And God, I pray, Lord, that you would touch them. Lord, I thank you for your blessings. I thank you, Lord, that you allowed me to get out of bed, give me help to come to a job this morning. Lord, we pray that you would just bless this meeting, and you'd be honored. In Jesus' name, amen. Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'm proud to serve with this team up here. We've got a full, what you call this thing up here? Panel, okay. Full panel. And I recognized them at one time, but there's one person I left off that's not up here that has been very, very important in getting things straight, and that's my executive assistant, Dawn. So Dawn, thank you for everything you do for all of us up here, and I appreciate that. Just a reminder to review the minutes from June the 10th, 2025, the work session, also June 10th, 25, the Board of Meeting, the minutes. They're available for your review. If you hadn't already done it, they should be over on the back table. Announcements, Team Paulding 2025 graduating fire recruit class was wonderful, so watch the video with us.
So today, we're actually at the recruit graduation. This is the time where we get to celebrate our newly certified firefighters that'll be serving the county start tomorrow. Today, we celebrated their accomplishments. 16 weeks of firefighter one training, hazmat awareness and operations training. They also were in a 16-week advanced CMT program, so that's what we are also celebrating today. So a total of 32 weeks worth of training, well over 1,000 hours worth of training that they've accomplished. So just a small token of our appreciation.
It means everything to me. Thank God for this day. I have to give all glory to him. But it's also just a start. It doesn't stop here. It just means I gotta keep going and keep pushing and keep running.
It means a lot to me because I have a big family. I got four kids. I got parents here, in-laws here. They put up with a lot over the last eight months, and I'm excited, hopefully, to kind of pay them back a little bit. And obviously, you know, the fire department is, is a dream, so it's, it's a lot.
David, Duncan, Jacob Hughes, Jimmy Montero, Seth Haynes, Rodriguez, Aaron Camacho, Paxton Gregory, Lomicio Pozon, Man Crankfield, Zion House, Taylor Clark, Charles Haynes, Colin Brudice, Richard Grant, December.
I can't put into words how proud I am. It's incredible to look back at the, the progress we've made, the lives we've changed. But in 15, 20, 25 years, they'll look back and think, wow, that was the best career I could have ever had.
And I personally thank you for everything that you do. I know that some of the things you do are challenging, and some of them really take a toll on you, because I've got one son that's full-time as a fireman, and I had another one that volunteered in a different county. So I know what you're going to do. So thank you so much as a, as a citizen and also as a father of a firefighter. There might be another video. Is there going to be a video for the Public Safety?
There is.
We're gonna do the video first or do it afterwards?
We'll do it second.
Do it second, okay. The Board of Commissioners would like to present the Public Safety Appreciation Award to Lieutenant O'Keefe, to firefighter Soto, firefighter Plummer, and Alvin Powell, Fire Apparatus Operator for the Paulding County Fire Department. And thank you all for coming up. And I think you have that presentation here, correct?
First of all, thank you for letting us do this to the Commissioners and the leadership of the county. We don't do this very often. Public safety personnel, firefighters, the ones in the room, deputies, marshals, do not want to be recognized universally. You can tell by the body language right there. Universally, when something big like this happens, that crew will say, "I was doing my job." But there's a time where something so profound happens, a life is saved, that we need to, need to recognize them. So let me just give you a little setup, then we'll play the video. Saturday morning, April 5th at 5:07 a.m., just think about the time, our units were dispatched to smoke in a structure. Most of the time, those turn out to be nothing. We've run this kind of call hundreds, thousands of ti- times. This time, Engine 3 was first to arrive. They were prepared for anything. They had their gear on. They were ready that this might be a fire. Turns out, there's smoke rolling from the roof when they got there, again, just after 5:00 in the morning. There's only one other engine responding with them. They're not on the scene yet. They realized that there is somebody trapped in the house. Lieutenant O'Keefe, Soto, Plummer, and FAO Alvin Powell, who couldn't join us today, went to work. These gentlemen made entry into the house. Within 60 seconds, they found an unconscious victim. We'll show you in the video. They pulled him out to the backyard. They began rendering emergency medical care. They saved his life while part of the crew went back in to suppress the fire. So we have about a two-minute video. We'll show you that, and then we'll present the awards.
You can see it back here if you want to turn around.
There he is, there he is. I'm going to have him. Man, yeah, man, thank you. What are we doing? Hey, tell him on the radio. I'm in the big hall and I have a victim. He's coming out the bedside. Very clear?
Last time for the top there.
Hey, don't sign him. Hey, man, hey, man, come here. Hey, a victim on the side. You missed the side. Hey, Soto! Soto! Hey, give me your mask. Give him a bag. Hey, we need bags back here.
So there's 30 minutes of video. We cut it down to two minutes for you. It's a little blurry. We redacted the victim's identity. But thanks to the prompt response and swift actions of Engine 3 and other Paulding County fire personnel, some of them are in the room today, that responded, the victim was transported to Cobb Hospital, and he was discharged seven days later on April 12th. So one of the highest awards that our department can bestow is the Medal of Valor. The timely interventions of the Paulding County Fire and Rescue Team, particularly Engine 3, not only saved the life, but demonstrated the dedication and professionalism of the, professionalism of the department. Paulding County Fire and Rescue takes pride in its committed team members who consistently prioritize the safety and well-being of the community above all else. So Chief Brubaker will present to Lieutenant O'Keefe, firefighter Soto, and firefighter Plummer the Medal of Valor and a letter of commendation. Congratulations.
And the Board of Commissioners, Lieutenant O'Keefe, here's your appreciation. Soto?
Yes, sir.
Here's yours, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. And you, thank you, Eric, for everything you do. It brings back, y'all go through a lot. But thank you for your service and everything you do to protect us and our safety. So we're gonna get a picture, okay?
Yes, sir.
Nope, everything's good. Old business, we have none. We do have five new businesses to go over, and the first one, we'll get Mr. Jones up and it's discussed the action to authorize the chairman to execute a letter supporting the GDOT for the installation of a single-lane roundabout in the intersection of SR 61 Cartersville Highway, Harmony Grove Church Road, and Cochrane Road. The project is located in Post Four.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The current intersection of Harmony Grove, Cochrane, SR 61, also known as Cartersville Highway operates as a two-way stop-controlled intersection, free flow on the main street, Highway 61, side-street stops on Cochrane Road and Harmony Grove Church Road. The side streets, Harmony and Cochrane intersect Highway 61 at a skewed angle. There's also horizontal and vertical curvature that impact site distance on various movements at the intersection. GDOT, in their work program, has this location listed for the installation of a single-lane roundabout. GDOT is funding and managing all facets of this project, including preliminary engineering, utility, right-of-way, and construction. GDOT has requested the county provide a letter of support, supporting installation of a roundabout at this intersection. GDOT requires these letters of support for projects. Obviously, they want to make sure the local governments are supportive of these projects before they spend a significant amount of time and money, spending money on these projects. The letter of support will include language that the county will pay for the cost to energize the streetlight system for the roundabout and assume responsibility for the operation, maintenance, and costs of the street lighting going forward. It will also say that, request that the county pay for the cost to mow and maintain the landscaping installed in the project. GDOT requires local governments to assume the cost of mowing and landscaping for roundabout projects in their respective jurisdictions. Further along in the process, we'll present some other related agreements for the board to consider, such as local lighting agreements and mowing and maintenance agreements. Staff generally agrees this is a worthwhile project and requests the board to consider signing the letter of support for the installation of a single-lane roundabout at Highway 61, Cochrane Road, and Harmony Grove Church Road.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead. Questions?
I wanted to ask you, so 61, as I understand it, is on schedule to be widened to four lanes at some point? Is that right on the north end?
On the south end it is. Highway 61 has a program project going just south of Dallas-Neebo Road to just north of US 278. That's a program project. I believe it's fiscal year '26. If there's anything on the north side, Cartersville Highway, it's in very, it's in long range at this point. There's no engineering that I'm aware of.
Okay, I was just curious why they didn't make it a double-lane roundabout. Now, I know. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this roundabout? We're okay. Next one, George, would be discuss action to adopt Resolution 2025-17 for the 2025 Paulding County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan adoption. We changed it around on you, didn't we?
Sorry, you changed it up on me. I thought it was number 11.
Well, we changed it.
Okay, get my steps in. Paulding County was notified on January 31st, 2023, of the selection of a 2022 Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan Grant, also known as SS4A. The Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman to enter an agreement with the U.S. Department of Transportation at the June 13th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting to accept this grant funding. The grant was designated for the development of a safety action plan, with the U.S. DOT allocating $160,000 and the county providing a match funds of 20%, which was at least $40,000. On March 12th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners authorized the chairman to enter into a consultant services agreement with VHB in the amount of $200,000, and a notice to proceed was issued on March 20th, 2024. The 2025 Paulding County Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, also known as CSAP, is Paulding's roadmap to achieving the goal of eliminating traffic-related, transportation-related fatality crashes and serious injury crashes. Between 2019 and 2023, 93 people lost their lives, and there were 376 people who were severely injured on roadways in the county. The CSAP provides a thorough plan to support the long-term goal of eliminating those traffic-related fatalities and serious injury crashes. There was multiple stakeholder meetings, public meetings, focus group meetings, pop-up meetings, surveys, coordination with the cities, GDOT, even adjacent counties stakeholders. The CSAP supports the safety objectives included in the adopted 2022 Paulding County Comprehensive Transportation Plan update, and essentially, this is a step towards reaching the safety goal of zero deaths and zero serious injury crashes. The CSAP identifies systemic and location-specific safety needs and a range of strategies for addressing those needs through a combination of infrastructure improvements, policies, and strategies. To be able to apply for certain safety-related grant fundings, the CSAP is required to be adopted by the local governing authority. At this time, we're requesting the board to adopt, you know, the safety action plan so we can apply for some funding sources.
Any comments or questions? There are none? There are none? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, the agenda is to discuss action authorizing the grant of sewage easement to the city of Dallas at the Sheriff's Office Training Facility.
Commissioners, this is a, this is simply the relocation of an old sewer line to a new location. Prior to the development of the training center, there was an existing sewer line that had been installed out there. With the, with the development and construction of the sheriff's training facility, that line needed to be moved. This movement is now just a little bit west of the parcel, right behind the firing range to its new location. There is one unique provision of this easement, and that is that the city of Dallas will need to notify the sheriff's office anytime it intends to access or do maintenance out there because of its location behind the firearms range. If you have any answer, any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next would be to discuss action to approve the transfer of 33.569 acres, known as parcel L, at the airport for, from Paulding County, as a solo owner, to Paulding County and, to Paulding County and the Paulding County Airport Authority, as joint ownership, and authorize the chairman to execute a deed for the same.
This came from Nate Shatner, our airport director. This is a 33-acre parcel. There's really two reasons for this request. The property is currently owned by the county. It was originally part of the Morgan Property Acquisition. But a portion of the acreage is within some of the original conceptual design plans for the airport facilities, and another portion of the property is to enable for a roadway to be constructed from airport parkway that would access the western and southern areas of the airport, rather than having to bring traffic further down into the airport to get, to get to those locations. And just to be clear, as the chairman read, the county owns it. By operation of this deed, the county will still own it, but it will also be a joint owner with the airport authority. So, it'll be titled to the two of them together.
Any questions, concerns?
Mr. Phillips, that is consistent with the way that we own the airport, correct?
Yes.
We jointly own that, and we own several properties around there jointly, correct?
Yes. Commissioner Galli, you are correct. Every portion of the airport that's devoted to airport operations is owned jointly by the airport authority and the county.
Okay, thank you.
Any other? Next would be discuss action to award the design SR 92 from Hyrum Park to Maxwell Road to Atkins Realis, in the amount to not exceed $99,698. This purchase is funded through the Renewal and Extension Fund, and it's located in Post Three.
Good morning. Can you hear me? The original state Route 92 widening goes basically from the Douglas County Line all the way up to Cobb County, and they have split this project originally into four projects and then has split some sections into different sections. Two of these sections, the water system has already relocated water mains as part of the widening. The most recent section that has been looked at, that we've been told they want to go forward with, was the Hyrum Park to Maxwell Road section, which is part of the widening from Neebo Road to East Paulding Middle School. Atkins Realis has been working with us, and they have already completed a 30% design with the state. And normally, we go 30, 60, 90 as part of the way we do the design, but since the state is, GDOT is going forward, we'd like to go ahead and keep continuity with the design by going with Atkins Realis to go and complete the job from 30 to 100%. And we would like support in having their contract awarded for $99,698 to complete the design project for the water relocation from Hyrum Park to Maxwell Road.
Any questions, comments?
I guess when I first read this, I thought they were designing a road. And so, I wonder if we might want to put in our agenda this afternoon, water and sewer relocation designed for Highway 92 expansion, just to make it clear to the public what we're voting on. And because if you just glance at it, I mean, I saw your name, so I figured it had to be to do with water and sewer, but not everybody knows that.
Yeah, we'll get with Rebecca and see if we can do that.
Ray, I have a question, too. So, we normally go from 30 to 60 to 90% as far as construction drawings go?
Those are the normal groups that we choose so that we stay up to date with DOT. They're just pushing to go all the way.
Any reason to go from 30 to 100, or what's the reasoning behind it?
Basically, they have accelerated what they're doing, so that tells us, you know, they've got a lot of their acquisition already in place, and this allows us to go ahead and have it 100% designed and be able to bid it out so that we can get ahead of the project.
So, it's just a matter of, we'll be prepared because we expect that it'll happen quickly or potentially could happen quickly?
That's correct, and we can also, two ways to do a DOT project is we can bid it ourselves or have GDOT bid it with us, and if we go ahead and get the design, we can actually get a contract out and save money by realigning our water system first.
Thank you.
Any others? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Appreciate that. That's the conclusion of our regular business this morning. I will have no public participation on agenda items. We're going to go into executive session, and we will adjourn from that session. So, y'all back at six. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session and adjourn from there and to discuss for the purpose of real estate.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Do y'all...